May fifteenth at six P M.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Willers.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Barnett.
Present.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins.
Here.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Latimer.
Here.
Youth Member Patterson.
Present.
And Chair, Vice Chair Wyrick.
Present.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that Chair Dombach is absent from this evening's meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
So move. Second.
And a roll call, please Natalie.
Commissioner Willers.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent.
Aye.
Commissioner Latimer.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wyrick.
Present.
Youth Member.
Yes.
Youth Member Patterson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously?
All right, at this time, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. If I could ask Mr. Latimer to lead us, please. Thank you very much. And at this time, I will open this section of the meeting where we invite comments from the public. Any member of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It's recommended that members of the public keep their comments to three minutes or less. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for commission consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the chair, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone and begin by stating and spelling your name. Are there any members of the public wishing to make a comment tonight on items not appearing on the agenda? Yes, come forward, please. State your name.
Hello.
Hello.
Ooh. Here we go. Carrie Gerster, I'm on Spain Street. You guys probably remember me from the last comment I made about a month ago. I am here to talk about continued concerns with the Sebastiani land use proposal, which is what I spoke about last time. I and other residents remain very concerned about the density and breadth that's allowed under the current proposal. We were all hoping that we could kind of pause the current situation and reconsider before proceeding, given that they will have fairly dramatic impact on the city for many decades. However, from what I can tell, it seems that the city is moving ahead. And I've heard that the E I R has begun. Also, from what I have heard, the next real opportunity to have any real significant impact is when the development codes are established, I think, which is about a year away. Not sure if that's right. So I'd like to request that the commission be a little more clear and specific about three things. First of all, where we are in the process moving forward. I follow this, as you know, and I, it was news to me that the E I R, we were already in that part of the process, so that would be helpful. Secondly, at what points the feedback from the citizens will be most seriously considered? I feel like I've heard some conflicting things on that, and I honestly don't know. And third, what is the most effective way to deliver our input? So I do know we've been advised to have clear bullets of wants and don't wants, and that makes a lot of sense to me. But it's not clear to me, you know, where, when, how, and with whom we discuss this information, and I'd love to understand that better so my neighbors and I can be more effective. I'd also like to request that we hold some sort of meeting where there's more of a two-way dialogue that's permitted. The idea of a study session has been mentioned as a possible vehicle for that. And I know you can't respond to my comments in this forum, so I'm going to email this to you and perhaps some of you can reply to me that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ken Stokes, S T O K E S. You've seen me before. My comments will be a variation on the theme just presented. I'm also part of the Sebastiani Winery Neighbors Group, who've been appearing at Planning Commission and City Council meetings for some six months now. As you all well know, several of us have voiced our concerns and suggested alternatives to the proposed Sonoma mixed commercial updated land use designation for the winery property, both in person and in writing multiple times. Without repeating the details, our concerns are primarily focused on the minimum and maximum proposed density requirements, both representing significant increases versus the surrounding neighborhood. The specificity and range of allowable commercial uses within the proposed mixed use designation, specifically as it relates to visitor serving limitations around commercial uses. How best to assure the protection and maintenance of existing green and agricultural spaces, consistent with the city's vision and Planning Commission stated goals? And finally, the increased threat to residential safety in the event of a need to evacuate the area, should there be any intense redevelopment of the winery property? However, given that non-agenda item comment sessions like this one, not without good reason, I understand, essentially are one-way streets, where members of the public give input without a real opportunity for feedback or discussion. I therefore respectfully request that the Planning Commission arrange for a study session or equivalent opportunity wherein concerned members of the community can engage in meaningful give and take, voice our concerns, share our suggestions, and actually have a discussion with representatives of the city regarding if or how our suggestions might be reflected in the general plan update and/or the revision of the zoning and development code definitions that will inevitably follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, are there any other members of the public wishing to comment on any items not appearing on tonight's agenda? Do we have anybody on Zoom? All right, with that, I will close public comment, and we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there any commissioner wishing to pull any of the items listed on tonight's consent calendar?
I will abstain from four point one because I was not in attendance. Oh, no, no, excuse me. Three point one.
Okay. All right. No other member of the commission?
I will abstain on item three point one as well. I was absent.
And I will abstain from item three point one because I wasn't on the commission.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar form?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please Natalie.
Commissioner Willers.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent.
Aye.
Commissioner Latimer.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wyrick.
Yes.
Youth Member Patterson?
Yes.
The motion passes for the first item. Four, zero, three, one, and the rest of it passes unanimously.
Thank you. That was quick. Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the consent calendar and move on to our public hearing tonight. Item four point one, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a sign permit at three zero one First Street West, including action to approve a categorical exemption. Staff report, please.
Good evening, everybody. So the item before you tonight is for three oh one First Street West, the Stone Edge Farms. It's going to be the first floor of that building in the front. So just a summary. So Stone Edge Farms is located in the downtown district planning area on First Street West. The site is approximately seventy-five hundred square feet with a five thousand sixty-four square foot historic ice house and a one thousand six hundred and thirty-one square foot wooden barn, containing an eight hundred square foot A D U, common fitness area, and a detached two-car garage, as well as three tandem parking spaces out front. The primary structure is historic and is a contributing element to the Sonoma Debo district. And they have a fifty-foot approximate frontage along First Street West for that whole parcel. This is the project site looking from the street. And the proposed project is to install two new non-illuminated wall signs, one on the east building elevation along First Street West, and one on the north building elevation over the French doors. This is, the wall sign number one is the proposed sign facing First Street West. It's measuring forty-eight inches wide by thirty inches high for a total of ten square feet. And then the second sign in the proposal is measuring forty-six inches wide by eighteen inches high for a total of five point seven five square feet. The total aggregate is fifteen point seven five total. If the Planning Commission can make the findings for both the basic findings as well as the findings for proposed signage within the historical overlay district, then staff recommends approving the sign permit application for three oh one First Street West, subject to findings and conditions of approval. This concludes staff presentation, and both staff and the applicant, I believe, are here and available for questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you Natalie. Do any commissioners need to disclose any ex parte communication with the applicant? In case seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward to address this topic?
Neil Caldwell, well-designed premium signage. We're the project designer. I'm also joined by Stone Edge Farm General Manager Dorothy Chichetti, who can answer questions that maybe aren't best for me to. Thank you to the commission for hearing this item, as well as city staff for your work on this, as well as moving the item to this Planning Commission for the D R H B C meeting, which did not happen on Tuesday. We really appreciate it for the timeline of the project, hopefully, fingers crossed. So the design here is really designed to just be very cohesive with the building. We understand the historic nature of it. The building is going to be, you know, open for appointment-only tastings, et cetera, so we need some type of brand identity. The branding is consistent with the longstanding Stone Edge Farm identity, iconography, et cetera. Looking at just a very, very tasteful and subtle treatment, aluminum signage painted in satin finishes, so it'll be, won't be shiny or anything. The lettering is actually cut out of the face of it, so we're playing with just contrast here. It'll be primarily just visible to pedestrians that have already navigated and parked and walk up, so that we're just affirming that they're at the right place. The primary sign that you could see here on this page on the bottom right corner is going to be centered above the plaque, which commemorates the historic renovation of the property. And then the other sign, which is on the north elevation, is above the actual entry doors, which are gained access through a walkway on the right-hand side of the parking. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Do any members of the commission have questions for staff or for the applicant? Okay. Bring that back to the commission. Thank you for your comments. I'll now open a public comment for this matter. Seeing no members of the public, I will bring it back to the commission for comment. All right. Is there a motion?
Well, I, I think that, you know, the signage is in compliance with our signage ordinance, and I, and I think it's complementary to the building. And those all the things that were presented by the applicant. So I would look to approve it.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the item as presented.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Willers.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent.
Aye.
Commissioner Latimer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wyrick.
Aye.
And Youth Member Patterson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair.
All right.
I need to recuse myself from item four point two because of proximity of a piece of property that I own. And so I will be departing and sitting outside. I want to compliment you on your gavel technique, by the way.
Well, when you have it, you might as well use it. And at this time, I would like to recuse myself for my financial interest in this project, and I will turn the gavel over to Commissioner Willers and his wonderful abilities. Up to you. Cool. Thank you. A little rusty on this, but we'll proceed. We're about to hear item number four point two. Discussion and consideration of possible action to approve design review variants and exceptions for, in addition to a single-family residence built over forty-five years ago, located at four thirty-four Patton Street, including actions to approve categorical exemptions pursuant to section fifteen three oh three, fifteen three oh five of the state Sequel guidelines. New construction or conversion of small structures, class V, minor alterations in land use limitations. Could I have the staff record?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Associate Planner Jacob Dunn. This item is for the designer review variants and exception of four three four Patton Street. The property is developed with a one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven square foot single-family residence, a three hundred and twenty-six square foot cottage, and a one hundred and thirty-eight square foot shed on a eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five square foot lot. The property is located in the central waste planning area and historic overlay and is known residential low density. The applicant is proposing a rear addition to expand the dining room, master suite, and laundry room, as well as an increased driveway width, new ground-mounted equipment, and roof modifications, which will increase the overall height of the structure. The site plan shows the additions to the rear, including the removal of a sycamore tree to allow for a new patio area. The additions will maintain the existing side setbacks of the residence, which are non-conforming, and will require the approval of an exception. An exception is also necessary for the increased height of the new ground-mounted equipment that's located on the west side of the residence. The other structures on the property will remain unchanged, and the driveway width is proposed to be increased by two twenty feet wide and within five feet of a utility pool, which results in the need for a variance. So the current ordinance states that driveways shall be constructed to provide a maximum fourteen feet, fourteen-foot wide travel lane, which can be somewhat restrictive. And after reviewing the previous language of the section, we found that the code didn't define width, but the new language was adopted in February of twenty twenty-three. So the residence was built over forty-five years ago and required a historic resource evaluation, which found that the residence didn't qualify as historic under Sequel. The existing elevations here show the design of the current residence, which the new construction is expected to be consistent with. So this is the front and rear elevations, where you can see that the windows and garage door have been modified, and the exterior door placement and sizes were altered. The front door will be relocated and replaced with a new solid-core wood door, stained white oak. The entry porch railing will be repainted to black bean. And at the rear, you can see that the roof is increased in height and now features skylights and a dormer window for aesthetics and lighting. All the new doors will be fiberglass or wood clad with fiberglass, and the roof will be charcoal or dark gray composition shingles. So these elevations show the east and west side of the residence, where the style of the existing structure mostly remains the same. New windows will be installed with Dover white fiberglass trim and black bean frames. The siding will be made to match the existing ship-lap siding and painted Dover white. The project meets all the requirements of the development code, except for the side setbacks, driveway width, and the distance from the utility pole. Although the setback is non-conforming, the additions are consistent with the existing setback currently. So the project requires, is required to meet the design review findings due to its age. It was found to be compliant with the development code and general plan. It doesn't have any historical characters that will be altered. The proposal is consistent with the adjacent development and preserves the environmental features in the front yard and maintains the landscaping in the rear. The historic resource evaluation determined that the residence, yeah, did not qualify as historic and therefore didn't need to meet the Secretary of Interior standards. These requirement for these findings was due to the historic overlay. And so the proposal is consistent with the design standards and is not known to be located in near any historic resources. The adjustment to the driveway is consistent with the intent of the zone, and the subject parcel can be seen as restricted from privileges that other properties in the same vicinity enjoy. The location of the utility pole and strict application of driveway requirements further restricts the property owner from utilizing their property in the way they would like to. The approval of the variance was not found to be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to properties that are in the vicinity. In terms of the exception for setback and the increased equipment height, we found that it was consistent with the intent of the general plan. It doesn't change the use of the property at all. The additions will utilize the existing setbacks for consistency in design, and the additions to the rear are not expected to impact neighboring properties. So staff recommends approval of the design review variance and exception at four three four Patton Street, including the approval of categorical exemption pursuant to section fifteen three oh three and fifteen three oh five. And staff's available for any questions, and I believe applicant is present and will be available to answer any questions as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions of staff from the commission?
Sure. It indulged me for my, my newness. So, you know, the side setback, the seven-foot side setback. From a philosophical standpoint, is there any, the reason for the setback requirement is mostly privacy? Was there any concern about, like, fire safety, things along those lines? You know, what's, what's the, what's the reason for seven feet?
My understanding is it's both those things. It can be privacy as well as fire. Fire is more, has a shorter setback, is three. And so when you come up to development code, we would like to increase that just also for the purpose of kind of leaving space between homes for that.
So the fire department doesn't care whether if you're building within seven feet of the?
Correct. Yeah, as long as they have three feet of clearance to be able to pass.
And then the driveway requirement being at a maximum of fourteen feet. So I actually walked down Patton Street today. And I think every other driveway, including the most recent construction right next to it to the west, is more than fourteen feet wide. Is there, has there been conversations about changing the code? Because it surely doesn't seem to be an enforceable kind of?
We researched this recently. It was something that was changed in twenty twenty-three, and so we're trying to figure out what the purpose of it was, the intent.
It was increased, it was decreased to fourteen feet in twenty twenty-three?
Yeah.
So the property to the west fell under the prior?
That's correct.
So, so what's the, why, why ignore that? If you've had a change of the code to maximize the distance at fourteen feet, why decide to say, hey, we can go to twenty?
The applicant's requesting a variance for it, so.
But why did you feel it was appropriate?
Due to the findings for properties in the vicinity that also have the, have a driveway that's larger than that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions? Then I'll open it up to the applicant. If there's, Wayne, would you like to approach?
Ted, do we disclose any ex parte communications?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Has, have any of the commissioners had ex parte communications with the applicant? Okay.
Wayne Wyrick, three ninety-two Saunders Drive in Sonoma. I just wanted to say hi. That's really it. I'm here to answer any questions. With respect to the driveway, I, I had the same question about why the fourteen-foot requirement. I think the intent was to, on the east side of town, the intent is to have garages built in the rear instead of in the front of the property. And the access to those garages, they wanted to make a narrow, relatively narrow, not a two-lane driveway to get to those garages. So I think that was the intent of the fourteen-foot. I don't think it was well-written because the way it's written right now, it effectively prohibits two-car garages on the east, in the RL zone. And I don't think that's what is intended. So happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions of the applicant? No? Okay. We'll bring it back, close the public hearing. Discussion? I'll open the public comment at this point. Any comments? No? I'll close the public comment. Mission. Anyone would like to make a comment about it or a motion?
I don't remember when we changed the driveway, so I'm curious who remembers that and what our thinking was associated with it, because I really, sorry, forgotten.
Well, it is, I, I do think that it's related to what Mr. Wyrick said, and that is that our zoning code essentially requires, it requires garages to be set back twenty feet from the face of the building, from the front of the building. That's the basic zoning requirement. And so the driveway access to that is held to a minimum from, so that you're not producing a two-car garage out of the driveway, essentially, in the public space. Given the fact that we have many historic, you know, many buildings over forty-five years old, many buildings that are already developed with two-car garages within that twenty feet, in fact, in front of the building, the face of the building. That's the problem in the language, I believe. So there's no accommodation at this point or recognition of an existing condition, so we end up with a variance issue.
A question. Is it currently a one-car garage? And so when I was looking at the, the documents, this will now accommodate two, the driveway will accommodate two vehicles and essentially get off of Patton, which is incredibly narrow and you can't walk your dog or push it, you know, a child's buggy or, I mean, it's, I, I can see the concern from a, just from a safety standpoint, as well as, you know, security to your vehicles, et cetera.
If I may, I, I totally agree. That's the reason that we created the additional parking space in the front is because we've had mirrors ripped off of our vehicles because four cars, you know, cars parked on each side plus two cars passing just doesn't work on that section of Patton Street. And so we felt from a safety perspective, it would be better to have a place to park two vehicles instead of parking on the street. It's the least favorite item that I, we're requesting for sure tonight because we don't like a lot of asphalt. We're hoping to do some treatments that will sort of minimize the viewing of it, but and that's another problem with the section, the code section, is that it doesn't, while the drive aisle, I, I mean, I could leave the existing driveway approach the way it is and expand the drive, what, what could be considered the driveway, but the driveway width could be fourteen, I could call it fourteen feet, and then put walkways on both sides, and effectively could park there. So we don't want to do that. We want to widen the approach if we can and, and be able to park two cars.
And it looks like it was, the application looked like it was more like pavers or as opposed to just asphalt.
Well, we're, we're trying to decide how we're going to do it. If cost allows, we want to do a treatment that, that gives the appearance of a narrower driveway, even though you know, it's going to be twenty feet wide, whatever paved surface we end up with. Currently it's concrete.
Thank you.
Okay.
I like the design. I like that you're keeping the vintage style. I was really.
I was really mad when that house next door got approved. I'm the only one who voted against it. I'm still mad about it. I like that you're keeping it single story. I think all of this looks really good and I can totally be in favor of it. One comment, we don't say master suite anymore. We say primary suite. So I would change that, but I get what you're saying there, but overall it looks like a really good project.
Stephen was just asking me if that's true and in my line of work, we have been and we are now reprimanded if we in any kind of, you know, promoting or marketing any kind of a property, you cannot use the word master. It now needs to be used, the word is primary. And you can't say things like walkability to the plaza. You can't, it's, it's considered discriminatory. So that's correct. And that's the life that you and I lead with this, yeah.
Any other comments? Someone like to make a motion? I'm good. You've made them all.
I make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
I.
Commissioner Latimer?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
And Youth Member Pedersen?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Commissioners in the hallway can reapproach? Okay. All right, moving on to item four point three, discussion consideration and possible action to approve a use permit, design review and variance for renovation and addition at three ten Second Street East. Staff report, please.
All right. So this next item is for the use permit, design review and variance at three ten Second Street East. The property is developed with a two thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine square foot duplex on a six thousand and six hundred seventy-two square foot lot. The property is located in the northeast planning area and historic overlay and is owned medium density residential. Design review is required due to, due to the age of the structure and the historic resource evaluation was conducted, which found that the residence does not qualify as historic under CECL. The designer view includes changes to the windows, including new newly installed windows, siding, color and new stairway to the second floor. The applicant also proposes an interior renovation on both floors and in addition to the first floor to accommodate a new living room, bedroom and dining room. Roof modifications are also proposed on the garage to add a deck that will be accessible from the second floor tenants. The site plan here shows where the new one story addition will be located in the rear along with the roof deck above the garage and a new stairway. The additions will be consistent with the existing setbacks of duplex, which are considered non-conforming and the approval of the proposal will be dependent on the approved variance.
What parts on this drawing indicate the additions?
At the rear of the property on the, to the east, you'll see it says new one story addition.
Where does it say that? Oh, okay, thank you. Pardon my old eyes.
Oh, that's okay. So this is the existing and proposed elevations for the front of the duplex, which shows the changes to the siding, doors, windows and entryways. The lower fifteen feet of duplex will be smooth finished stucco painted a warm sand color and the remaining portion will have a warm brown vertical wood siding and all windows will be replaced with energy efficient windows painted Bahama brown. This elevation also shows the proposed deck cover, which is intended to provide shading and will sit on stucco clad columns and painted to match the stucco siding. This is the rear of the duplex where you can see the existing patio, which will be removed along with the exterior doors to the second floor. The first floor addition will extend into the rear and include more windows, a new door and a larger sliding door. The second floor porch addition can be seen clearly from this side on the north elevation with changes to the existing windows and the design. The chimney is also planned for removal and the roof shingles will be replaced with weathered copper roofing. And then on this side, you can see the new stairway from the south elevation, which is more flush with the front of the duplex and new windows, which will be installed to provide more light to the units. The proposed project is compliant with all of the development standards of the northeast planning area except for the setbacks. The additions will not extend further into the setbacks, but the consistent, but to be consistent with the existing setbacks, the applicant needs a variance. The project requires the approval of a use permit for the renovation of a non-conforming structure and it was found that the use of a duplex is consistent with the intent of medium density residential zones and the project promotes an innovative design. The proposal doesn't alter the existing use and the renovation of the duplex does not impair the architectural integrity of the residence or the duplex and will enhance the character of the units for the tenants. The proposed work is in conformance with all the other applicable provisions of the code and does not expand upon the non-conformity. The changes are not going to result in increased height or setback and the proposal doesn't include replacement of more than fifty percent of the original floor area. The project complies with the general plan by promoting higher density development without imposing rigid stylistic restrictions and the proposal also promotes innovative designs to make the duplex more livable for the tenants that are there. Since this project was located in the historic overlay, it had to meet additional findings. And given that it was not found to be historically significant, it didn't need to meet the Secretary of Interior standards and the proposal is consistent with the design standards and doesn't have historical characteristics that will be altered. It's also not expected to put, to impact historical character of adjacent properties. And the adjustment is consistent with the intent of the zoning district and the existing setbacks, which are non-conforming, but will be maintained. The variance is not going to grant any special privileges as the standard setback will be consistent with the original. And the proposal uses the duplex to its full extent and provides the tenants with a more livable space that be, that wouldn't be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare. Staff recommends approval of the use permit, design review and variance at three ten Second Street East, including action to approve a categorical exemption pursuant to section fifteen three oh one and fifteen three oh five of CECL guidelines. The applicant is present and would like to speak on behalf of the project and then staff is available for any questions. Thanks.
Would the applicant like to come forward? Could you just state your name, sir, for the record?
Good evening. My name is Glenn Ikamoto, three two four Second Street East. My wife, Kim Bellchamber, and I are the owners of the duplex. Before I begin, I would like to thank the commission for the opportunity to address this and I want to commend the work of the staff. They were responsive, respectful, helpful. The work was superb. I'd like to give you some background on, on, we acquired this property in July of twenty eighteen. It's immediately adjacent to our home. And in fact, we bought this property on the south side and the east side. So of the neighbors, we are two of the three. Again, it's adjacent to our house. We did not buy it for investment. We bought it because it has a significant impact on our property and we wanted to control what is done with it and who lives there. It was designed and built as a rental, but we wish to convert it to the lower floor acting as the full time retirement home for our best friends who, for me, I've known for fifty-four years. And we wanted to feel like a single family home as much as possible. The upper unit will remain a rental to the public because we did not want to reduce the amount of residences in the, in the city. We are here seeking a side setback variance. The existing building is five point three, five feet, three inches of current setback, which I believe was within the code at the time the structure was built. But the current code requires a seven foot setback and that would be applied to the addition, not to the existing structure. We are adding eight and a half feet to the back of the house, which is twenty-four feet long. So we're adding eight and a half feet to a non-conforming wall, but within exactly the same setback. And obviously, we don't want to go to seven feet on the addition and have a two foot jog in the primary bedroom. Also, what's important to realize that that is the wall that, that can carry the window, the only window in the bedroom. So again, we don't want to put a jog in that wall. We are the only neighboring property to this variance, both on the side and the back. Nobody else is affected but us. As far as the building goes, the existing building is a bland, cheap, ugly structure, including the garage doors, which are the primary things that the public sees. All the windows are the lowest cost aluminum, single pane windows you can find and the only way you can open them is with a significant amount of jiggling. All the plumbing is galvanized, the electrical is undersized, the heating is minimal, the duct work was designed for cost and not for warmth. There's no AC and worst of all, there's no ethernet. So the new building or the remodel building will have high ceilings between nine and ten feet, copper plumbing, modern smart home electrical and highly efficient HVAC systems. As far as the neighborhood goes, it's going to be a beautiful building when we're finished with it. It was designed by an award winning architect. It's got high end finishes inside and out. The architectural features include that beautiful Spanish art stairway to the upper unit and the terrace above the garage deck. We've already had a huge landscaping upgrade, including three one hundred and seventy year old olive trees. We decided to conform our front yard and this building's front yard since they were adjacent to each other. So it's got three hundred and seventy year old olive trees, it's got a new front patio and brand new sidewalks. Again, we had to redo our sidewalks and we decided, you know, these are pretty worn and dated and let's just do it right. Staff has informed us that our neighbor has expressed concerns about dust and noise and parking. We are stripping all the stucco off the building and it was already planned to use scaffolding with dust shields. That's pretty standard when you're stripping stucco. We may use a crane to take the roof off in large pieces, so there shouldn't be any dust in that procedure. If we decide to take it apart in place, the demolition contractor will be told to evaluate the dust generation and decide whether to add another level to the scaffolding. We're going to evaluate that once we get into the structure. Again, we are next door, so we have the same concerns about dust. In fact, we're downwind, so we have more concern. As far as noise, construction noise is regulated. There are specific times when you can construct. Obviously, we will comply with all of those regulations. As far as parking, we will tell the contractors not to park north of the property line, which is where our neighbor's home is. There's plenty of parking on that street during the workday. Shouldn't be any problem at all. The crew is probably three, three carpenters and, and the trades come in in cycles, so there shouldn't be many trucks at any one time. Our house has a very, very, very deep driveway, so we can accommodate any trucks that can't find parking north of the property line or south of the property line. In conclusion, we're trying to take the ugly duckling and make it into a swan. We've got a very high end construction team that built our home. We invite the commissioners to visit the, our home to see the quality of the work. And we're asking for a variance so we can get started. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any commissioners that need to disclose ex parte communications with this applicant? Okay, are there any commissioners that have questions for staff or for the applicant? Yes, Ms. O'Neil?
Yeah, if staff can help me with this. I always get caught up in this. If there's a non-conforming use, we're not allowed to increase the intensity and I can't remember the verbiage with that and I couldn't find it in the code, but if you guys could help me with that piece, that I've been.
Yeah, so you don't want to increase the intensity of the use and then as well as you don't want to go over fifty percent of the original floor area or the external walls. We do have that in the finding. There it is there. These are the four findings for non-conforming structures. And that in terms of, you know, increasing its, the use potential and things like that, that's what needs to be restricted.
So with the request for the variance for that side, so the only thing that would be A, because we're not, so it's only the one side. But the A is the addition or improvements conformed to all other applicable provisions of this development code. So everything is, meets all the code standards. It's just that one setback for that. And when we talked about everything else, it, like we were saying, it meets the code, but you can approve the variance. So this, these findings are more of, you know, if we wanted to just do a use permit and they didn't want to do anything else, this is what it would apply. With the prior project that we just looked at, you're approving the whole project as basically a new home because they are adding more than fifty percent. So they're not, you're basically approving the house as it's with the addition as a new home. In this case, this is the only little trigger for that. And it is a, it is a conforming use of land.
Are there any other questions from the commission for city staff or the applicant? Okay. At this point, I'd like to open public comment on this matter. Ms. Claudia, I saw your hand raised. If you'd like to come up.
Well, I noticed, okay, listening to you guys.
And if you'd just state your name.
Claudia Raneker, three hundred Second Street East. In listening to you talk about Wayne's project, oh, could you put the layout, the pictures and the safety issue came up about, well, I couldn't help but notice, looking at this plan, that if you'll see on the top of the page, there, it shows the top of the, whatever that's going to be, then the building and then it immediately goes to shrubs and that's the, where the variance is applying in there. Well, those shrubs are going to block access. If, see where they're at the corner of the building, there, nobody will be, I just saw that. Case, and then I noticed on the other side, it's not wide enough. So if that access is blocked, basically, how will somebody get through that access? Is that important? That's the first thing I saw from listening to you guys, the safety thing. Then the other thing is the property is going to be raised up. I forgot, thirty-two feet, I think, or thirty-two inches, I believe. And they did that by putting twenty inches of soundproofing that I think could be more than needed. I don't know because I, if I recall, it only takes ten inches, but there are different ways of that. I just, because he said it is going to be, oh, here's that. It is going to be raised up. And, okay, and why I'm here, can't see. Yes, it was because of the dust and they are not in the line of sight because the whole backyard that exists today. because the whole backyard that exists today is full of shrubbery. Then it goes shrubbery here on the right side, backyard, side yard. They have a building there with shrubbery between the unit and that. There's no dust is going their way. We have a six-foot fence, four feet of which is solid, and then there's wire up on top of it. The dust will come our way. But I spoke to a friend of mine who's a contractor and contractors kind of in a way have to protect you. I'm only concerned with the teardown. I don't care about the building up. I love construction. It's the teardown that's taller. And I experienced the teardown of the property that they live on, which is two lots connected together. We had every kind of heavy equipment you could imagine. Tearing everything down, I could smell gasoline and crashing and terrible. And I thought, this is what it's like at the rainforest. The aggression, the taking it out. So I also am kind, I guess, affected by that. And I'm sure that this isn't going to be that crazy-making. And if it is, I'll deal with it. You guys are around. So that I wanted to say that, yes, we will have quite a bit of dust. And I wanted to point out that, yes, it is going to be raised. And because they're putting one foot and then twenty inches of sound stuff that I'm not sure is completely necessary. But I don't care what they do, so I just wanted to point that out. Oh, and then my most concern is, yes, I had suggested that... I had suggested that because we have going up the patch, there's no parking beyond this point, so nobody's there. Then on Castiganasso's side, there's parking in that area too. There was a problem. People complained about the parking during the first build, which, yes, took three years. This one, I'm sure, is going to be shorter and not as many tradesmen. But it's, there's nothing like coming to your home, when you're done at night, coming home and everything is in order. And you can park where you want. I would like to know if you guys could put designated parking during this construction because you have the opportunity to do that. In other words, to not have the area be whoever many people come, if I'm making a point. You have an opportunity to be considerate to the neighborhood, is the point I'm trying to make. When construction people come in, everybody's trying to get here and get there. That's my main concern right now, is making it as normal as they can for the neighborhood. We've had the three-year experience. So I think I've hit them. I'm concerned about people going around there. The dust, I'm sure, is going to be okay. I'm okay with building. It's destruction I can't tolerate and parking. And if anything comes to my mind later, I'm sure I'll be back. Okay?
Thank you very much, Claudia. I appreciate it.
I know you do.
Can I respond to that? I'll allow a quick response, yes, sir?
First of all, as to our three years of construction, that was COVID. So we had a five-month delay. And once we were, and that was a legal delay. You couldn't build. And once we came out of that delay, of course, all of our subs were already back five months, and so there was another five-month delay. So that was COVID construction. The other thing is twenty inches of soundproofing. I think she misread the plan. It's two inches. And yes, the building is getting higher because we're raising the interior ceiling heights, which is in today's world desirable. And we made sure we kept below the thirty-foot limit. So we're within the allowed limit. And as far as the setback, I couldn't really figure out what she's talking about. She pointed to the top setback with it, there's no variance there. The variance is at the bottom. So I don't know what that meant.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, one last quick response, Claudia, thanks.
Do you guys have the plan? Do you guys have the plan of it? It shows the twenty inches of foam insulation. It probably is foam insulation, that's why it's twenty inches.
Sir, if you'd keep your comments addressed towards the commission.
Don't you guys have the plans?
We do have the plans, but that's not before us tonight.
Okay. So that I do want to say. And it may have been COVID, but when it was COVID, they weren't doing any construction, like you just said.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Are there any members of the public who have not yet spoken who wish to address the commission on this issue? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for commission comments. Commissioner Wellers.
Okay, so I want to keep it to the item that's in front of us, and that is essentially the two-foot variance on the southern property line of the addition. We've in the past approved these, in fact, earlier approved these forms of variances. It's very common that these buildings were built at a time when the setbacks were only five feet on either side and combined being ten as a normal setback requirement. I don't think that, I don't think any of the other construction essentially is within our jurisdiction. In terms of control, it complies with our building code as well as our development code. So for me, I can make all of the findings for the variance.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, Ms. O'Neill?
I do have a question for staff. A point that Claudia made about parking. My concern and all due respect to Claudia, isn't Claudia's house the bike path? So what do we have? Do we have any kind of ability to just ensure that we have a safe area there? Because that bike path is heavily used right there. And I'm just wondering what our options are.
So because it's a crossing with the new state law, you have a twenty-foot setback that you can't park in. And it's not red. It's just if a deputy drives by, they can be ticketed. So it's twenty feet from any crossing now.
Okay, so we could just at least make that clear with the contractors that that setback...
He sounded like he was going to make his contractors go only in front of his house and this house instead of extending towards the side. I mean, it's...
Why, anybody could call in to say, Sheriff, there's a car parked in the bike path setback.
In the bike path setback, yes, anybody can call on that.
Okay.
I have a question. It's related to that. Is that actively pursued, I'll say? Because it's happening everywhere.
Right, so we're doing the soft touch right now. We just give little, not tickets, but little information sheets of just, hey, this law changed. Because it's, nobody really knows about it. It's very hard to know about it. And then in key areas, and if there's areas where there's major conflicts, we were talking about them actually last night at the Climate Action Commission meeting with the Public Works Director, is any areas where there's major conflicts, we're going to red curb, but we don't want to red curb the entire city. And so we're, did the Plaza area and Broadway. And then if there's other areas, like we talked about in front of Whole Foods and those crosswalks to start...
And I suggest the corner of First Street West and MacArthur often parked in that, on both corners there. And it makes it very difficult to maneuver onto the street as well as see.
Following on that, how are we educating people that there is this new setback that we can't park there? Is there a sign that says no parking? Or how would you know that you're a scofflaw?
A nice little note on your car. It was in the paper, like, that's how I found about it. I found about it on Facebook, actually, from another city nicking a posting. I know that our city's posted and things like that, but we can talk about that later.
Okay, let's talk about that later. Red curbs are not a bad idea.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission on this item? Commissioner Barnett?
Old habits die hard. I just want to touch on the procedure. If a neighbor becomes concerned about dust, so what are the remedies available if a neighbor feels that there's some condition developing that is either potentially hazardous or otherwise troublesome?
They need to contact the city. And then that way that the city staff can let the building inspector know at that time to, and then we can request them to go by while they're doing their inspections to have conversation and observe themselves because we need to observe it ourself as well. And sometimes we don't get told for days and then we go and nothing's occurring. So we always ask that it's in the moment.
So you can, you indicating that the city can respond quickly to a call of concern?
We think that day typically, our inspector is out in the field already. And so it's just a matter of calling him to swing by.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commission comments? Okay, I'll weigh in and just say that on the narrow item that's before us tonight, which is a variance for a setback, it seems unbalanced to not be that intrusive or that detrimental to the health and the vitality of the neighborhood. We can't litigate really any other issues tonight that relate to the construction project. And I do appreciate the offer of good faith by the applicant to make sure that those nuisance issues are, you know, addressed and that... Thank you. And that, you know, the neighborhood remains a happy, healthy place to be. With that said, I have no problem supporting the approval of a variance.
Well, with that, unless there's further discussion, I would make a motion to approve the use permit, design review, and variance for renovation addition with reduced setback standards for a non-conforming duplex located at three-ten Second Street East.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, Natalie, roll call, please.
Commissioner Wellers?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner Latimer?
Yes.
Did I say that right?
Perfect.
Okay. Vice Chair Wyre?
Aye.
Youth Member Pedersen?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, thank you. It must be the way the meeting's, must be the way the meeting's being run. It's the gavel, yeah. Okay, moving on to item four-point-four, consideration, discussion, and possible action to adopt a resolution approving an application, use permit, design review, exception for reduced setback for a live-work, two live-work units located at three-sixty-nine West Napa Street. And if we could have a staff report, please.
I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to keep my voice. I made, can you hear me? Yeah, you can hear me like this, okay. So I won't talk with my normal volume. So this project is located actually behind three-sixty-nine West Napa Street. We have not provided an address to this location yet, waiting for the units. And then we will provide, in this case, two, if it's approved, we get two addresses. So this is, again, the rear unit. This was approved, lot split was approved in 2021 for this location. It is in our mixed use and the historic overlay on the West Napa Sonoma corridor. And the lot is about eight thousand square feet. As already presented, it's two live-work units that are being proposed. The garage is a two-car garage with a second-floor artist studio. And then there are three parking spaces being provided to within that garage. It is, again, located at the rear of the lot. The proposed live-work units are modern in design with primary materials of vertical wood siding, dark metal roof, and large metal-framed windows. While the building located in the front is an updated craftsman house used for office purposes, the modern design in the rear does not detract from the structure as seen from the public roadway. Here is the site plan. The closest structure is the garage will be setback from the front building off three-sixty-nine, a hundred feet. The existing office space use and parking for that use will remain in that front lot. And the proposed project is solely located on that rear lot, including that fire turnaround that you see. The big gray hatch is that fire turnaround requirement.
Can you use a pointer or something? Because I am lost.
Sure. Laser pointer.
And just as one other question, the cross street, this is between Third and Fifth. Is it on the south side of the street? I'm trying to locate in my mind of the property. The office that's in the front in the moment, is it at the Granko Office Building?
Exactly. Good job.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, it is the south side of the street. So it's next to the multifamily, the White Multifamily building. And then a commercial building next to it on the other side. So you see the rear parking lot, and then you see the multifamily here. And then there's multifamily back here. And here is Napa. And on the site plan, so this is the front lot that faces three-sixty-nine. This is three-sixty-nine, sorry, that faces West Napa. This that you see here are the rear parking spaces behind that house that's turned into an office. The lot starts right here. So it's a shared access. The lot starts here, and then here's one parking spot. Here's the other two. And here's a required fire pole. So the fire truck needs to be able to turn around. This is the live-work units with the artist studio above the garage. So again, here is the neighboring multifamily that is to the west. They're parking. And then here's the building that is on the east. And then their parking lot is back here. Does that help?
Thank you. So north is actually on the right side.
So north would be the right, correct. And so here are the proposed elevations. And for, just for going again to, this is the north here on this elevation that you're looking at. This is the east elevation. So here's the north, here's the garage, artist studio. And then here is the rear property line and fence, the rear of the structure. And this is what we're going to talk about for the request for the exception for the, basically, an intrusion or a setback into the required setback on this upper level. And then this is the west side. So again, this is the rear of the structure. And this would be the front. Here's the garage. There is a covered walkway that joins the two buildings. And then here are the north elevations, the main building, and then the garage. And then here we have south elevation for the garage. It's not an ADU, please ignore that part. And the south elevation. It's not an ADU, it cannot be an ADU, it is not an ADU. All right. So the analysis is that it does comply with the front setback. It is thirty-one feet behind that property line. The garage setback, however, for this specific property, the garage is in front of the main building. It is not visible from the street. So maybe some further clarification when we, in the future, look at that again. But it is in front of the main units. The side setback... Um, the side setback for the lower level does meet the requirements, but the second level does not. There is no step back being proposed. And that, um, the requirement again for this area is two feet for every five feet of height above fifteen. The rear is fifteen feet. The lower level again on the rear meets it, but there is that second level projection that I showed you that encroaches four feet into that setback. It does meet the FAR and the site coverage and the height. For the live work units, um, so each unit is color coded, so one unit is green, the other unit is blue. This is the lower level showing workspace versus, um, residential space. There is a kitchen on the lower level. The upper level does contain the, um, residential, um, bedrooms. I'm not gonna say master, um, just bedrooms and the artist studio above the garage. In looking at the requirements for live work, there is a minimum seven hundred square foot. It does meet that. The average is twelve hundred square feet. It does not meet that average. It is fourteen ninety-seven, so almost fifteen hundred square feet. Um, so there is a request for an exception to that. The residential max is seventy percent of the area of the unit and with a minimum work area of three hundred square feet. And it does meet that for each unit when you include the artist studio with the unit one. Again, parking is three spaces, it's one and a half spaces per unit. An open space is, uh, two hundred and fifty square feet of open space per unit, combination of public and private. Or they have provided over three thousand square feet of common open space. So the project does propose residential and commercial development on a site designated by the general plan as mixed use and at a density that complies with the mixed use land use designation as well as applicable intensity standards. The live work use itself is compatible with the surrounding and future uses as is located behind an office and adjacent to multifamily and commercial, housing and commercial uses. Also with live work, density does not apply. Planning Commission has the ability to determine that. Um, it does comply with our design review findings, um, and it is, um, consistent with design standards and the development code and also within the context of adjacent development. And in the historic overlay, it is not historic, the building in front. I do not have evidence that it's historic, but regardless, it is setback over a hundred feet um, from that structure, um, and probably would not be visible given the, um, uh, location on the site at the, at the far rear, um, as well as the grade differentiation. An exception is required to exceed the average unit size and to encroach four feet into the rear setback for a portion of that upper level. Staff has provided findings for these exception requests and believes the request does not promote, oh, I'm sorry, does promote creativity. The fifteen hundred square foot adri- average is consistent with what was allowed in the Carneros Village Live Work. The larger unit is allowed for a two bedroom live work unit with the large artist studio above the garage, providing a better utility of space. The variance is to allow the second story to be placed at the same setback on both sides of the structures and not be stepped back in accordance with the code as well as to place the garage in front of the units. The, um, project location again is at the rear of the rear lot and is fifty-five feet across from an, uh, with an access easement through the front lot. The depirer department does require that vehicular turnaround on site, which lends itself to the placement of the garage and or onsite parking in the front portion of the lot. Side setbacks where the second floor would reduce the building length on that main structure to thirty-five feet on that second floor, limiting the availability of the space, uh, for the residential use. Um, granting the variance would not be detrimental to the public health or safety, um, or welfare. Um, and the neighboring property, multifamily, uh, property, um, does not utilize a step back on that second level. So staff's recommendation is if planning commission determines that the findings can be met for the use permit, design review, exception, um, for the reduced rear setback and average live work unit size and the variance for the garage location and second floor setback for two new live work units. Then staff recommends approval of the application, um, based on the findings provided, um, and the conditions of approval, which does include specific live work conditions of approval that are, um, in our code. Um, or planning commission can choose to, um, make modifications or recommend modifications to the project that can be part of the conditions of approval, as well as whether the findings can be met. And then lastly, planning commission can request modifications from the applicant and request continuance of the matter to a future hearing date. And the applicant is here.
Thank you Director Gates. Yeah, are there any commissioners that need to disclose any ex parte communication with the applicant? No. Okay, uh, with the, well, would, uh, any commissioners like to ask staff any questions, Commissioner Barnett?
Yes, um, is there any information about the condition of the property beyond the rear property line? In other words, there's another parcel behind this parcel. Um, and I can see in the photograph. Yes, and so it looks like, uh, and I can't tell from this, is it a driveway? Or are those, are those rear yards? Do we know what the conditions are on the other side of the fence?
Those are rear, uh, they're the rear of those units. I do not know if they actually have yards as you're talking about. I can, we can Google it real quick and we can get back to you.
Well, I.
What's the street that those, how do you access those units?
What's the street parallel to Napa?
It would be.
Andrew? Oh, Robinson Street, yes.
Third street, it basically, probably one of your axes and there's some little sort of uh, island neighborhoods back there with streets that don't connect to the rest of the grid system. I guess I'm just, I'm asking because I, I want to understand what the conditions are for the granting of the variance, um, given, given the location of the building. So it looks to me like the setback for those houses, not knowing whether they're yards or driveways or what it is, it looks like the setback is probably at least twenty feet from the rear of those homes. So am I correct? Did, can I get in our architect?
Let me get it, just a second. Um, so based on this Google that we just looked at, it looks like the front of their homes are their open space, their private open space, but I'll bring it up for you. Um, otherwise it looks like the rear are about maybe five feet from the.
Oh, five feet?
Yeah, the rear of these properties, it looks like five feet from the.
As a rear yard setback?
Well, it's, yeah, it's gonna be a PUD.
Oh, it's a PUD. Okay, well, um.
Hey Bill, if you could. The kind of going to ask is are those two story units?
I'm gonna double check. Tanoke, does anybody know Tanoke? Or one story?
Commissioner Willers, did you have another question? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Barnett?
You said there, this had previously was approved for a lot split. And so that has been codified?
The final map has been recorded and all of the conditions of approval that still apply to that lot split, including the tree, uh, removals and preservation and things like that are still applicable to this project. So they were included as part of, um, the conditions of approval for this project.
Okay, and do you know whether the, the new lot that has been created has been sold?
It is the same owner, um, as who split it and, um, Mr. Bevan is in the audience and can answer your questions around that.
Okay.
We do know it's for sale, but yes, it has not, it has not been sold.
It has not been sold. Okay, thank you.
And as to the multifamily to the west, that is two story, correct?
Correct.
And what type of a setback do they enjoy? Any, any idea?
Let's look. It's another PUD, so.
It's a rental project, expensive. Yeah, and they were. And they were, they were in theory rentable for a period of no less than six months or something. When they first come on the market, I don't know what the occupancy is now or how successful it is as a project. It's gated.
So these, see these units here is what you were asking about. There is a gap between, it looks like.
I don't, uh, your cursor's not showing up.
My stuff? What are you seeing? Oh, I know why. I know why, I know why. Cause I've just minimized it. There we go. There we go. Um, so here's the lot.
Yeah.
Right here. Here's the multifamily, here's that carport that you saw. Here's the existing building. Here's their parking. This is the lot back here. This is the multifamily that's in the back. And that's why we are saying the, uh, private open space appears to be in the front of these structures. And then here's what they look like off of Robinson. And, um, in the plans right now, um, I'm gonna bring that back up. There are existing trees, mature trees that are being, uh, kept. And then there's two trees that are being removed or three trees right here. Um, they're in the landscape plans that are provided part of your plan set.
Any other questions for staff from the commission? All right, the applicant would like to come forward. George, if you have anything to add?
Hi, good evening. Uh, George Bevan, uh, one ninety west Napa Street. Good evening, thanks, uh, for your time. Uh, it's a big night. Um, thanks to staff for getting us here and, uh, appreciate all the input. Um, just, I'd just take this moment to share some highlights, I think. The, I spoke with the, the, um, multi-unit neighbors, um, to the west, Teresa and Ed. And, um, just shared the project with them. They're curious what's going on and, um, the majority, uh, they're excited. Um, the majority of my project, uh, you know, kind of fronts their carport. So they didn't really have any, um, any opinion about that, um, by design. And then, um, they would like me to add additional, you know, private, things like that. Like to, um, basically soften the edge of, uh, that, you know, the, the front unit, you know, on top of the garage. So I was, I'd just like to share the neighbor input, obviously to the east, it's just an open parking lot, so, um. And, uh, it's a personal project. Um, it has been listed, um, separately for sale. Um, just, it's, I, I, you know, just for, uh, I don't know, um, in case anyone wants to pick it up. Um, if they don't, I'm gonna personally, um, build this, so, um. Anyway, I, I'd just like to highlight, it's an infill lot. We don't have too many of those. Um, we need housing. Um, it's a cute little lot, it's private. Um, I originally split it intending for like maybe a small, single family, uh, for maybe my parents or something like that. Um, but in twenty twenty-two, I guess, single family is no longer allowed, um, in mixed use. Um, and then another highlight is, uh, fire, because I only have fifteen foot driveway. So fire, uh, limited the amount of units. It can't, I can't have any, any commercial use in the back because I don't have twenty foot driveway. And then the full, you know, kind of turnaround, um, that takes up a third of the property. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to highlight a couple of those kind of constraints when, you know, we're all looking at additional housing needs and things like that. The live work use is with fire and all those constraints, um, staff helped me. Basically, this is the, the only use allowed in, in this lot and I'm maxing it out. I don't, it barely pencils financially, so, um, but I like, you know, I created it and, you know, to offer some live work as, you know, uh, the only possibility and, and what I could do just, uh, from a development standpoint, I'm happy, happy to do this. So I'm doing my, the best I can to max, max things out. It's a couple cute little units, um, you know, walkability, obviously to the plaza and stuff like that, so I'm excited about that.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. Any questions, I'm around.
If, if any members of the commission would like to ask the applicant questions, Mr. Barnett?
I, uh, I'm glad to see something happening on this property. And, uh, I've always wondered what was going to transpire there. I didn't realize you owned it and, um, what, uh, so when a effort like this is made, the work you've put in to do this, which I think is a, is a creative and good use for the, for the property. I like the whole idea of it, but, um, you've put all this work and time into it and here you are getting, uh, basically, uh, looking for approval and yet the property's still on the market. If someone buys it, if I understand the law correctly, uh, their entitlements will extend to creating what it is you've designed. But if they wanted to do something else after buying the property, they'd have to go through this process all over again. Am I right?
Correct.
I'm, uh, wondering what the likelihood is of you actually doing it?
Yeah, there's, there's personal factors. I mean, you know, investment, rental, you know, we can have some tenants. Um, we own the land free and clear, so, you know, the construction cost, I tried to stack the units in a certain way and creative materials and things like that, so. You know, as a, you know, a small business, you know, I really have like a 401K. So this is, you know, you know, trying to generate some future income or maybe pass it along to my kids, so. Or they could actually go in front of you guys, you know, in about twenty years.
So do you, do you think the likelihood, I mean, do you think there's a fifty percent chance of you doing this or a seventy-five percent?
More than, more than fifty, less than eighty. I don't know.
I don't think we should even ask.
Money, yeah, it's just a personal.
No, no, I'm not asking because of a matter of approval. I'm asking because I'm trying to understand, uh, this, this process. Um, there's been circumstances around town where we've gone through this process to approve a project. I'm thinking of the Orchard Park, uh, project on highway twelve. Very modernistic, you know, almost a container-like project that we approved for six units. The property's for sale. I, I've heard nothing about it coming to fruition. We go through all this time and effort looking at these and reviewing them and giving our input and then you never know if it's gonna happen. So I'm, I'm not trying to pin, pin the man down, he's entitled to do what he wants. But, but I'm, I'm curious because I, I, I think this would be a lovely thing to have. And I'm, I'm in favor of, of what you proposed and I don't have any problem with your variance. But, you know, we just, we just.
Commissioner Barnett, I think you're willing to invest in this property, huh?
So that's it. Thank you.
I have a question for George. So clarify for me, the, the, it's a lot split. And the, you're, you've got the front unit listed. And then would you, so you're gonna go and develop the back lot? Are you, are you, would you, are, are you, would you sell them? Would you, I mean, are you just, I'm just curious.
What's that?
You don't have to answer, but.
No, I mean, I know it's, these are the options that you have, but, um.
Uh, they're two separate parcels, so that's done. Um, it was listed, uh, both for sale. We found out that they're two different buyers. So buyer, front, front lot, office buyer is like small insurance company. Like, like myself, like I, I had my office in there. Okay, great, perfect. I'll buy that. I don't care about the back lot. You know, it doesn't matter to me. Can I reverse the lot split? Like, that's been brought up. Like, I really don't care about the back lot. The second buyer is, I really care about the back lot and I want to maximize it as a development project. You'd be a builder. You'd be exactly who you think. And I really don't care about the front. So I kinda wanna like have the front for like X amount of, you know. So I end up giving away the back lot or giving away the front, you know, financially. So now it's listed separately. So if somebody actually like buys the front, it's a rental property for me. My off, I have some other office space. Um, so I could sell the front and that'll give me, you know, loosen things up. I could start building this right away, you know, for the back. You know, as a, you know, as a rental income. I could sell both of them and with the plans and we're going through plan check right now. So, you know, it, it could be a very buildable, buildable, you know, holistic thing that, you know, owner occupied is perfect for this use. Another buyer came, like a winery. It was perfect. It was, the winery offices would be in the front. And then staff would be actually in the back, which I, I love that, you know, for a buyer. Just learning who's coming to our town, you know, uh, what this would be used for. Um, yeah, it's an infill lot. I mean, I think I'm stuck in the, conceptually, like, providing housing and, you know, I'm hundreds of thousands into this already. But, um, you know, just a sweet little architectural spot, you know. Um, I don't know. I, you know, it's just something I'm interested in, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Latimer.
What's the logic to violating the average unit size? So i- if you, if we came back and said, hey, it needs to be twelve hundred square feet instead of fifteen hundred square feet, do you build it?
I would probably move the square footage around, like as a redesign, cause I think I'm under on one of the units. I know what you're saying. I, I would.
Why, why, why designed it to be out of compliance?
Um, I think it just happened that way, just cause I'm trying to actually, I cantilevered some of the open space. Actually, I was preserving that courtyard, so I have the fire turnaround taking a lot, right? And then I really wanted a really interesting, cause there's no views, you know, it's an interior lot. So I wanted this, like, go, you know, park. You walk back there and it's a park, you know, it's beautiful. And I'm saving this big oak tree and the covered walkway like frames it and it's a big open space. So that overage on the square footage, I believe, is, uh, space cantilevering over open space. So I would redo, it's, it's not, um, actually, I don't think I'd be redo, the, the, you would come back at twelve hundred square feet. It would just pull back that cantilevered space. The footprint would remain the same.
So the question is, is, does that become uneconomic? I mean, is there a reason why you're, you know, twenty-five percent above what's allowed?
There's, uh, no math around it, really, as far as economics.
Just, it's on the screen right now. You can see the difference. Like, unit two is nine hundred and twenty-seven, which is over the minimum, which is what we needed. And it's the unit one, um, with the commercial and residential. So, uh.
Again, why not just build it to the size that's allowed? I don't, I don't quite understand why.
So, yeah, so they would be reducing the size of the unit one. It'd have to be reduced, um, to under that two thousand square feet. So it's not, so remember it's the average.
Like five years ago when I bought this, the zoning allowed, I think, seven units back here, until I got in touch with fire. So, so there's that, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil.
Okay, mine, I'm not sure who my question's for, so if you'll stay there, George, that'd be great. Um, why does it have to be, uh, live-work versus just units? Is there something about the code that?
Can you help me out here?
Yeah, I'm trying to go back in my brain.
Because, because we do have live-work units. We've got the Carneros loss. We have those ones over on, uh, Highway twelve. Not that many people are doing the work part. It's like their private hobby or whatever. They're not really using it for work. So I'm just curious, what, are we required to do that? Is that something we need? I don't see it being a big marketing offered, opportunity, maybe?
It's a code-related item where it's, um, staff can answer. It's a driveway width.
Well, that's a combination of things.
Multi-unit triggers commercial width, fire access of twenty feet. So fire allowed two, maximum two units, which could each have an ADU, but there's no residential.
And no duplexes. Duplexes aren't allowed.
There's no duplexes, so by definition, it would be a duplex. So if I moved this way, it went that way.
And then when we looked at doing more than two, the fire costs, because then you're installing standpipes and everything, because we would, I think, was what, and alternative means and measures would have to go.
But why the work portion? That's what I'm not understanding.
Because we don't allow duplexes.
But these aren't, this is two units on a lot. Doesn't SB nine allow that?
Not in mixed use.
Not in mixed use. Okay. All right, cool. I learned something new. Thank you.
These are all really, really good questions.
It's a puzzle.
Yeah.
And while George is standing there, I'm gonna make a comment. This is what, this is, this is a really great example of what developing land requires. It, it literally is a puzzle that has moving pieces. And you, you don't get them to stop moving until you actually cut a hole in the ground and start building.
I'm emotional tonight, cause like, just to get here, you know, so, um, anyway, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions for the applicant?
You ready for a motion?
We have, we have to, yeah. I have to, uh, if there are no other, have an order in the chamber, please? If there are no further questions from the commission, I will open public comment.
Ken Stokes, S T O K E S, is the only member of the public still here. Uh, I think it's a fascinating and interesting shoehorning of all the requirements into an infill project, so I'd be supportive. Full disclosure, I also live in a George Bevan-designed house, but I had no idea this was on the agenda tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, seeing no more members of the public in the gallery, we don't have any on Zoom, correct? Okay, I will close public comment and I will bring it back to the commission for comments. Mr. Willers. Like I said earlier, you know, I think this is a really great example of how to utilize a property within the restrictions of our development code while taking opportunity of SB nine lot-split opportunities. It, it finds a way to provide the housing that the city's looking for. It does it in an extremely creative way, George. It, this is a beautiful little project and I'd love to see it. I'd love to see you be able to build it and live in it or work in the artist studio, whatever, you know. And, and the variance item, um, you know, my, my question is what's on the other side of the fence? And the other side of the fence is a mixed use, or not a mixed use, but a multifamily planned unit development with the minimum setbacks to the rear fence. The bump on this project covers a set of doors for the lower floor. It provides a little bit extra bay of space at the upper floor. And then the mix of, the variation of unit sizes, rather than each unit being twelve hundred square feet, to get to the twelve, to the twenty-four hundred square feet, the variation of unit sizes allows for a mix of housing also. A, a, you know, a smaller unit is not necessarily a bad idea and a slightly larger unit in the same mix is more dynamic than having two of them exactly the same. So at every level, I support, um, this project. I, I think it's a really, a really clever way. And, and I can appreciate the dancing that you've had to do, um, to get to this point. But I think it's a really clever solution on this property. Any other members of the commission like to make comments? Is there a motion?
Well, I'm happy to make one, but I actually think that it would be more meaningful for Commissioner Willers to. All right, I agree. Uh, this is exactly what we, what, what we need in town. And I have to say, having watched that property through its ten-year history that, uh, I can remember, I've been wondering what was gonna happen back there. And I had clients approach me. They were interested in purchasing it. I, I do loans. I don't do real estate. And I kept telling them, yeah, buy it. It's a cool property. So I'm so excited to make a motion for the approval of Resolution UA dash twenty-four dash twenty-five, approving the application, use permit, design review, exception for reduced rear, rear setback and average live-work size and variances for garage and second-floor setback for two new live-work units. You can do whatever you want in the work portion, located at three sixty-nine West Napa Street.
Second that. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner Latimer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wyrick?
Aye.
Youth Member Patterson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. Have a good night. Okay, moving right along. Uh, we will close the public hearing for tonight's meeting and move on to items for discussion. See no matters listed. Is there any?
Yeah, I don't usually list it, cause I've come up with it the day off.
During the meeting?
Not during. Sometimes during. Um, so I do want to, um, mention that, um, there was a delay in getting the design review ordinance to you. So my intent is to do it at the next meeting with the hope that the attorney is done reviewing, um, for that. Also, um, if, you know, we'll continue to bring things to you only if design review can't meet quorum. And so just giving you that heads up again. Um, I don't know that we actually have anything next month for them anyways. But, um, in case we did and they weren't able to make quorum, that, it would come to you guys. I, um, am going to call meetings for the ad-hocs, um, coming up. I'm also reinvigorating the general plan task force meetings. And I am starting to get, um, I'm hoping to have three elements by the end of the month. So in June to start the general plan task force and then also the tat, the ad-hocs for the commissions, um, to start looking at those. Um, you know, just to, to reiterate, I mean, I, um, said, well, he left again. Um, so, um, for those that, um, had those questions earlier today, just reiterate, um, if they have specific questions, please send them to me, um, and I will, um, meet with them again and talk about the process. Um, but key aspects, again, for the general plan process, it's a long game. Um, we're gonna have multiple opportunities for participation, not just at commission meetings, but at the general plan task force. Also, uh, just for clarification, study sessions are not intended to be back and forth with the public. Because you're a commission, it's still supposed to be regulated under the Rosenberg rules. Um, if we were to have a community meeting, that's when staff can do that kind of interaction or in, you know, individual meetings. They can also meet with you guys individually if you choose. But just remember, this is, we'll be coming before you for your recommendation, um, at the end of the day. The intent of an EIR is to study, um, its potential impact. And then that provides you all with the information, um, to then make your recommendations if something's different. That's kind of also the intent of why we wanted to do the ad hoc around creating the development code and kind of understanding how that would work moving forward as well, um, with these different changes. Um, I went to the California Preservation Conference last week and presented, um, at two sessions, uh, focused on housing and historic preservation. Uh, mostly, the first one was mostly just about all the housing bills and how they affect historic preservation. Um, and then the second was, um, focused on, um, I was a moderator. And Sacramento has just done their update to their, um, design standards for historic, uh, resources and their historic districts, um, of which they have thousands. And their goal was around middle housing and creating actual development standards instead of guidelines, um, to meet all the new requirements. Um, so be interested to, I'm gonna look at that. And then also heard from Portland has some really interesting design, uh, standards, because they don't have CEQA. So it's kind of an interesting aspect. And an interesting speaker to have brought, uh, to the California Preservation Conference. Um, I think that concludes, oh, last thing is, uh, the last meeting. The city council adopted the fire map and approved the contract for, um, an extension of the general plans contract for additional services. We're gonna contract with Farr and Pierce as a sub under our general plan consultant to do the evacuation study, um, which is required on our safety elements now that we have, um, a, a high fire zone. So just give you guys that update.
Jennifer Cook, um, request, it seems that there's a pretty common misconception that there's actually an application for development before, um, the city as it relates to the Sebastianni, um, uh, parcel. Uh, can you just briefly, again, a- address that?
Sure. There is no application. Um, the only thing that is under discussion and being, uh, looked at in the environmental is a general plan land use change. Um, and so there's no zoning. It's just general plan land use right now. Um, we would, after the general plan is adopted or concurrent with that, you could do the actual zoning map change, um, and some zoning information. So that is to be determined of whether that happens concurrently or a long time after, short time after. Um, so we'll work through that. Um, I, it's on my list, uh, within, before the end of the month when we start doing the elements to get an FAQ, um, up on our site around a lot of these same questions that keep occurring.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That was my question for you is, when we're approached by people in the public, what, what's, what's the short answer? What is the, you know, what's my, what, what are my talking points to address this and? Cause I've heard everything from, well, the applications are in and.
There's literally everything.
You're changing the density and.
Online.
So, um, FAQ would be great.
Yeah, so we'll have an FAQ that you can point for people to, but of course, as always, you can point them to me.
And how grateful we are for that. Anything further? Mr. Barnett?
So do I understand correctly that the council, uh, approved the formation of the Affordable Housing Task Fund ad hoc? And so when you say you're ready to constitute those, that's one of the ad-hocs that you're ready to have initiated?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And any, and anyone else?
And any, and anyone else who might decide to support?
We're, we're all, sorry, just one more thing. We are going to, um, Jacob's gonna bring the signs back again to a study session. We're gonna talk about it and then recreate the ad hoc for signs specifically. After we have that conversation and a little bit more focused conversation.
Great, thanks. Uh, moving on to the next item, commissioner reports and comments. Any members of the commission have anything to report or any general comments? Uh, Ms. O'Neil?
I just wanna clarify that our meeting in June is on Tuesday, right? Okay.
Ms. Barnett?
Well, and it goes back to some of my earlier remarks, I'm just curious whether, in any cities and in your experience. In with other cities, there's ever sort of a, a checkback or a follow-up to projects that get approved. But then nothing happens. So that, there's, for me, there's no sense of closure. I mean, if a project gets built that's been approved, I have a sense of closure about it. But driving down Highway twelve the other day past that parcel, which was two, was two commercial parcels fronting on Highway twelve. Across from, uh, uh, wherever, wherever it was. Uh, I'm not sure, it's the, uh, it's kind of near the old barn and, and so forth. You know, we, we had a wonderful hearing that was great encouragement. It sounded like a project was happening and. Now I see there's a for sale sign there and obviously nothing has happened. Do you ever hear from the applicants who said, oh, by the way, we know we went through the permit process, we got the approvals. But we've decided to sell the property, we're not gonna build it or anything like that. And when that happens, can that information come back to the planning commission? So I can either let something go and accept the change of reality or, or something, rather than harboring fantasies about what's gonna be done. And, and how wonderful we've done our jobs?
So it is not a reflection on how well you've done your job or not. It's called economic forces, um, which we have no control over. So sometimes you see projects that are not actually the owner. You see a developer maybe coming in that's not, doesn't own the property, but the owner has approved them to go through the process. There, there's a lot of different scenarios. What I will say, if you don't see it back before you and you don't see anything in two years? Two years now.
Two years.
Two years. It's not happening. It's done. Cause it would have to be restarted all over again. So in our list of resolutions, we're tracking how, like, when they're supposed to expire. And so we even talked about one today that's expiring in November this year that we haven't seen any traction on. So I did reach out and say, you need to come in and ask for an extension. Because there's not enough time to get enough going on that project specifically in the timeframe, uh, to lock it in.
Is there the potential for creating a, uh, a web accessible document? Or is there already a web accessible way for us to look at approved applications? And the timing of the approvals, so that I don't have to bother you and can verify myself for what the status of an approved permit, uh, is?
You could, or status, that's different. Um, dates, yes, but status, not necessarily, um.
Well, if I, if I knew that, if I knew I could look at something and it said the date of the permit approval and the current date. And I knew it was two years and nothing had ever come of it, then I could move it out of my consciousness and forget about it.
So we, what we're looking into is, um, upgrading in our GIS system. And connecting our permitting system to GIS, so you can location-wise see what's going on. So whether it's an entitlement being requested or a building permit that's active or been submitted. That way you can, that, that's the, the C and the status, that would be the way to do it. Because that would be the easiest in using, within our apps and our systems that we already have. Than trying to contact or fill out a spreadsheet. Makes sense?
Okay, well, I, I, I await the fulfillment of your vision.
I would agree that if there'd be value in just finding out if they're going forward or not and if they would share with us why they aren't. None of it's like really concrete, they can tell us anything they want, but it's, it would be good feedback for us to understand what obstacles they faced. Was it financing, was it marketing, they decided this wasn't a marketable property or what? But I don't know, I know that you don't have the bandwidth, but if there was a way we could help. But I think it would be interesting to get that kind of feedback as to what obstacles they hit and why they decided not to go forward.
Rising cost of construction. I can answer your. Okay, any other comments by members of the commission?
I, I do, oh, go ahead.
It's many things. It's not just cost of construction. It's, it's the dynamic of development, actually. And so, you know, um, like Jennifer said, you know, s- some developers will take an option on, on a property, get an approved project. Decide that they really don't wanna do that.
Right.
And walk away from their option, essentially, because the timing just doesn't right for them. So, you know, it, it's a tough thing. Tonight's little project, infill project, was a, a really good example of all of the minutia. That every project has to face, large or small. You know, that project was formed because of having a fire truck get back there. No matter what we said in the development code.
Right.
Ms. Nugent?
Speaking of status, what is the status of the proposed Montaldo project? Seeing as our, if, are, are we, are we?
The EIR was released, the EIR was released on Monday. And so it has a forty-five day comment period through, um, June twenty-fourth.
And the indictment of the owners has nothing to do with?
Nope.
The company or?
Nope. Everything is ongoing.
Okay, on that note, I have a comment. I would like to warmly welcome Mr. Latimer to the dais here. And thank him for his willingness to participate in the discourse. Um, we're kind of in an era of what I've termed to be a, I don't know, kind of a culture of apathy. As it relates to, um, local boards and local commissions and involvement at the local level. I mean, our political, you know, framework is often very binary and, and in terms of the national paradigm and what's going on. But, you know, ninety percent of what we deal with and, and see and hear and drive on on a daily basis is handled at the local level. Taxes, your public safety and, uh, and everything in between. So that's a long way of saying thank you. I appreciate your willingness to serve. And welcome to, uh, Ms. Nugent as a full commissioner, although I don't think she's ever not sat as a full commissioner, maybe one meeting, right? Right. Yeah, if there's ever, if there was ever a time to be involved on the planning commission, it would be now. I mean, there's, uh, lots, lots of change. And, um, it's a time of, of great consequence to be involved, so, thank you. Do I have a motion? To adjourn.
Kudos to our chair first. Kudos to our chair.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, now move to adjourn.
That's it. Adjourned. Seven fifty-eight.